I will reiterate that the Douglas Mission Statement, the Douglas Public Schools offer diverse learning experiences that meet the academic, social, physical, and emotional needs of all of our students. We provide a safe, supportive, and a challenging learning environment in which students may achieve academic success and personal growth. Decisions are made in the best interest of our students. I'd like to then pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have a student representative this evening, so we're going to open the floor for any public comment or communications. If anyone's here for public comment, you're limited to three minutes or less. And if you want to come up and speak to us, you need to say your name and where you live in Douglas. Do we have anybody that would like to come forth for public comment? Seeing as there is none, I'll move on to the next order. Is old business, Dr. Vera?
We don't have any.
Now on to new business and to the superintendent's report, please.
All right. We're going to start off with middle school and the high school doing a brief presentation on Project Lead the Way. Project Lead the Way, we've talked a little bit about in previous meetings. We have grant money and seed money to start it up. We're one of the last schools in the valley to pick up Project Lead the Way, so we're going to do it next year at the middle school. We've had hints of it a little bit this year, some shades of it. Christine's done some stuff. John at the high school has done his training. So you've heard me talk a little bit about Project Lead the Way. We're going to talk a lot about it next year, and I just wanted you to hear a little bit from the experts, the people who are actually doing it, setting it up. So we'll call Christine, Bob, and Josh up for a little overview of the project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I asked Mrs. Caesar to come here tonight because she's, besides being a fantastic teacher, she knocked this grant out of the park in what she's doing. And, you know, when she comes up and says, what do you think about medical detectives? I'm thinking, well, if I was in middle school, that'd be very exciting. So I thought she should bask in the limelight of this great program as well.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. So Project Lead the Way, we can go to the next slide. Do we have this up? Okay, just a quick overview. It's a curriculum that teaches problem solving to help prepare students for the real world and meet the challenges faced by, you know, companies in the global marketplace these days. It's an engaging classroom where students find project-based learning to be authentic, empowering, and relevant. And it's also an environment where teachers act more as facilitators, empowering students to take charge of their own learning. Project Lead the Way excels by offering programs, a study that empowers students to develop essential in-demand skills such as problem solving, critical and creative thinking, communication, and collaboration. As we all know, doesn't matter what field of study you go into, you absolutely need these. There are three pathways that are offered: computer science, engineering, and biomedical science. In this graphic, it just simply shows the three different pathways, and it shows it as it relates to simply the middle school offerings that Project Lead the Way has. So the computer science, engineering, and biomedical services, if you'll notice, the green checkmarks are next to the programs that we will be offering next year. The design and modeling will be offered at the sixth grade level, and that covers computer science, engineering, and biomedical science. Automation and robotics covers engineering. The computer science for innovators and makers is going to be an elective, and that covers computer science. And medical detectives, my favorite, I have to say, covers the biomedical sciences. And I just wanted to show you the direct pathway from what we're doing in middle school and how it relates to the courses offered at the high school level. So it's a direct route.
Can you talk a little bit about, I know you've taken the courses. What's happening in design and modeling? What's happening in automation and robotics?
Yeah.
I know, I think the 10-week units, can you just talk a little bit about the makeup of the units and what's involved in them?
Absolutely. Yes, and that's absolutely.
That's the next slide? Okay.
I read your mind, Dr. Vera. So, did you want to talk about the high school?
Sure. So I have a full description of it in the next slide. So we are going to be launching the Engineering Essentials course next year, which is that baseline high school level for the engineering pathway. And that's the first pathway that we've launched on. So way back in 2018 before COVID, John GNA and I went to the conference that they hold in Worcester. We got signed up. I won some socks in a door prize thing. It was a really great day. We applied for the grant. We got the funding for it, and then COVID hit, and kind of everything fell apart. And John was finally able to get his training this last summer. They ran the training again. And we're going to launch the Engineering Essentials course in the fall. And the course, the full description is up there, but what this basically is, it's like baseline work for somebody who wants to get into engineering. So this is not wood shop. This is not metal shop. This is not automotive shop. This is really for students who are probably college-bound. This is the baseline course, but we're opening it up to everybody, so grades nine through 12. And this is meant to lay that foundation for further courses in this pathway. So what we would be looking to add for the 2023-24 school year would be the Principles of Engineering course, which is that next step. And it kind of caps out with, there's kind of elective courses, and John was really big on one. I want to say it was like an aerospace engineering course, which I thought was really cool. And there's a cybersecurity one, too, that really belongs in the computer science pathway, but everybody kind of thought it sounded cool. But it reached, the pinnacle is supposed to be a capstone course that they take, which is really like a designing and engineering course, where they kind of take a product from theory to design to manufacturing all the way through. And so that's the course that we'll be launching next year.
Okay. So now, design and modeling is actually the very first course that I was trained in. And we just had, we started out with a little bit at the end of this year after I was trained. And it is a really, really neat course for the students because they start out with a project, and they learn the engineering design process. They learn to work as a group, and they have, they essentially have to create an ankle foot orthotic for a child that has cerebral palsy. And it's really, it's very exciting. It's very neat. It encompasses everything from, you know, who the patient is, and how they, the engineers have to have empathy and really gain an understanding of what their client or patient is asking for and needing from them. And it goes from that to the design process, and goes right through the design process to iteration and, you know, having to make those changes and make things better. And it's really a fantastic program. And it has several different learning targets. They learn about measurement. They learn about, they learn about 3D modeling online. They use Tinkercad. They understand how that translates into prototypes. And at the very end, they actually work on a therapeutic toy for a child that has cerebral palsy. So it's really kind of the whole deal. And they're supposed to take charge of their own learning. And that's what really makes it fun, when you're walking around and facilitating as opposed to up there telling them what they need to know. They're creating meaning for themselves. The next, and, yes, so the next one is automation and robotics. And I have not started teaching this one yet, but I have been trained in it. And it basically talks about automation robotics in the everyday. Kids all have an idea of what that means, but, you know, let's talk about it on a daily basis. What does that really mean? It's not this sci-fi stuff. It's happening every single day. It's happening in fields, in all fields. They talk about energy transfer automation, machine automation. They use the Vex robotics platform, and they basically apply what they know about design to create traffic light robotic arms and things of that nature. Again, my favorite, medical detectives. It is really exciting because this course literally gives the children, what am I trying to say, like patient profiles. And the students get to look at the profiles, and they learn about the human nervous system. They learn about the different systems, different systems in the body. And they have to go through, and they have to figure out what the disease is. And they have to give the rationale for what they're doing. And so they're really working hard and working together to figure things out. They learn how to take vital signs. They solve medical mysteries, trying to think, oh, they do labs, which is really fun. They investigate a disease outbreak. They do a press release for it. It's really, it's a really fun, it's a really fun course. So I'm hoping that they'll really enjoy that. And then the last course I'm going to be trained for this summer is Computer Science for Innovators and Makers. And what I know is what we have up there, it's, kids are going to learn how to blend the hardware and software development to discover how computer science works and how it's relevant to their daily lives. And I have to say, every single thing here, it's not just fun, or it's not just something they're learning. Everything is brought back to what is relevant in their lives, every single thing. The other thing I want to touch on is the fact that every single class has a component of careers. You know, who does this type of thing? What types of careers are we talking about? And ASA, in some of their literature, they say that middle school is the right time for them to start thinking about this, before they get to high school, before they get into that, you know, the stresses of having to know exactly what path they're taking and what they're doing. Middle school's a great time. They're still, they're very open to it, and it might hopefully open up their minds to take courses they might otherwise have not taken.
So looking ahead, after this year, so the 12, there are 12 kids signed up for the Intro to Engineering course, the Engineering Essentials course, and three of them are seniors, but then we'll have nine students who have completed like the Step One. So we plan to add the Step Two for the next year, which is that Principles of Engineering course. And it's the same process. John will have to go through the training, and there's some equipment, and there's some package. I'll talk about the funding in a minute for it. We also, we did apply for the computer science pathway at the same time. Sean Tossi was my computer science teacher. He did fill out the grant for it. It was nice to have somebody else fill out a grant instead of me for once. And they denied it because they said you have to show that you have succeeded with one pathway before they'll let you add another. That kind of made sense to me, so we did kind of put it on hold. There, that third pathway that they offer is the biomedical one. It's pretty expensive. So I put that one last, but that's not to say that the things that they're doing at the middle school don't already feed into some courses that we offer. We, you know, we have our own forensics course. We have our own anatomy course. We have our own biomedical course. And the idea is that those, as we, once we are able to get into the pathways for those, those courses then kind of shift to the Project Lead the Way curriculum. So we have our own robotics program, for example. When we switch to computer science, some of the stuff that they're doing with robotics and automation feeds into that. So just because we're not doing Project Lead the Way courses doesn't mean that the things that they're doing at the middle school, those units, those gate, are they the gateway units?
Gateway, yes.
Okay. What's the elementary school?
Launch.
Launch. I get those confused. But the things that they're doing, the gateway, they do still feed into things that they're doing at the high school. So, well, once we show that this first course works, Sean's going to apply for the computer science pathway again, and we'll get that up and running. And that kind of capstones with AP Computer Science, which we already run through a grant from Google, so it's nice because we'll just kind of shift our funding to a different source. And speaking of funding, so we did the grant program. It's a lot of money that they give you, but it's a lot of money to launch these things, too. So you have to buy curriculum materials that are specific to them, and the training is several thousand dollars. It's still left us with a lot of money that we were able to use to really increase the capacity of John's lab. So a lot of equipment that was needed for that course was purchased, and I couldn't for the life of you tell you what some of them are. I meant to look them up. But 3D printers were among some of the things that he was able to get. So it's a significant amount of money, and then there's the continuing money to sustain it. And the money for computer science pathway, it's a little bit less. The biomedical, they give you a little bit more because it's more expensive, but that's the funding that we've been able to do with, that's the grant funding that we've been able to get for it so far.
And in terms of the middle school, this school year marks the completion of our third and final year of the $100,000 ASA grant. So this is our last year with that, so hopefully. And just to make a point, we did consider sustainability of the courses that we're offering for the next couple of years and beyond, so.
That's good. We did, too. So like some of the, like John GNA already has a budget that he uses for supplies for manufacturing drafting. So those courses, we'll run less sections of those courses, and the money that we would have used for those will go towards sustaining the Project Lead the Way. So it's kind of giving that niche for a different group of kids who, you know, aren't, they're not the AP ELA kids, they're not the AP Spanish kids, but they're, this is another sort of form of challenging academics that they can take.
I'd like to thank Mrs. Caesar. A lot of this is on her own time outside of school. She's always running to me with new ideas. The amount of energy in our classroom, it's great. It got so bad that I was chasing kids that were not supposed to be in our classroom going down there trying to watch the young students. I go back to your classroom. She has a lot of business thrown at her.
I think some of the other nice stuff, they alluded to, we have seed money in our elementary school for launch, and we were able to carry that over for next year. We just don't have the staff to run it. So it'd be really cool if we could start that at the elementary school, build upon it in the middle school. It was interesting, at awards night, we were looking at some of the engineering and computer science recipients. I think it was like five males and one female. It'd be great to attract more females in the engineering and hook them in the middle school, and that feeds into our high school program. The other cool thing, that once they complete the pathway and they take an assessment, they're senior, a lot of local colleges are giving credits for those engineering courses. I know WPI does, and I believe UMass Lowell does, for their engineering programs. So what a great way to hook them in the elementary and middle school, keep them for the engineering part here at the high school, and allow them that opportunity to get some college credits when they leave. So a lot of good things. So thank you for the presentation.
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely, yeah.
So from the $100,000 grant that last, that supported the program for three years, is that right?
The $100,000 grant provided training, and it's providing the durable goods and the consumables. And it's going to, let me see, we use the funds so that the goods that I purchased are going to last, well, I think it's two years out is how we did it.
Okay. Is there going to be a need for grant funding to support it in the future?
Probably. But more for consumable goods than some of the bigger stuff.
Okay.
The durable goods will be able to keep and use for a long time to come. That's the chunk, that's the biggest chunk of the money. But yes, in time, certainly, we're going to have to purchase some consumables.
Is this something that our schools, our district can get time and again, to keep going, like 10, 15 years in the future with this kind of thing, or?
Our local budget's going to have to support it.
Okay.
And that's what makes the biomedical path so expensive. Like I bought all the durable stuff with the grant for the engineering program. It's the consumables, but I already had a consumable budget on an annual basis for that. The computer science has almost no consumable. You don't, it's computers. If you have computers, then you're good. It's some software licensing is maybe the equivalent of consumables, but there's kind of, those aren't too bad. The biomedical has a pretty significant consumable. And you can't buy like 10 years' worth of frogs with the big grant, so. You don't want to use, you could, I guess, but you don't want to use those frogs 10 years from now.
You don't wash salmon in the cafeteria or refrigerator.
So our budgetary process is going to slowly work towards absorbing some of that cost?
Correct.
Okay.
So the grant funds paid for the training and paid for the machinery, the heavy equipment. And I think it paid for one or two years of the consumables. What'll happen in two years, once that funding dries up, we'll have to absorb that in the budget. I think Josh is able to do it with the engineering just by shifting some stuff. We'll just have to reallocate some additional funds in STEM at the middle school.
Okay. All right. And then I had one other question. Can the students shift from one pathway to another? Like if they go into the medical and be like, whoa, I don't like the idea of blood or whatever, and they, can they switch to something else?
Because they're units. Yeah. So for me, it's full courses, and for the middle school and the elementary school, they're more units and lessons, right?
So, oh, actually, thank you. So at the middle school level, it's, they're nine-week courses. They're 45-day lessons, so it's a full term. So.
So they have to finish it through the end if they're just?
Of the term, yes.
Ah, is it? Okay.
Yes. So, and all the seventh grade will be doing automation and robotics for one term until they go to another special or special.
So the high school, they're full-year courses. So, you know, it's, you don't have to take the full pathway if you just decide. You could take AP Computer Science, for example, without taking necessarily all of the courses leading up to it. You just might not do very well. And you could take just one of the engineering courses and never take another. So you could, as a freshman, you could take the Engineering Essentials, and then if you decide, well, the computer stuff is more interesting to me, yeah, you can switch over. And I don't see that our pathways will ever be more than two courses plus perhaps a capstone that they would do and move senior project. So I think it's really just looking at like a three-year course for that. I would like to see maybe some of those really cool electives, the aeronautical engineering. Like I think that that belongs more with the collaboratives, the co-op that we're doing kind of with the other.
With life on the bus, yeah.
You know, I may never get 12 kids at once that are going to take a cybersecurity elective, Project Lead the Way's cybersecurity, but I could see that being something that we could do regionally. So I think it's just two courses here, and then maybe a capstone. But yeah, I mean, if a kid could fit in their schedule, they could do all three. It'd be really some crazy Tetris to fit that in their schedule.
Those that want to do it, though, they do do it.
Some of them find a way.
Yes, they do. So on behalf of me and myself, I'm sure at the committee, too. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I think this is exactly what we need to start honing in on, especially at the elementary school up and make it, and what you guys have done in grant writing, I know it's no small feat. So I truly appreciate this entire project. I think this is exactly what we need to do to move the district forward for all of our students. And I'm so happy that we have someone leading the way with us. So thank you.
And do you notice that there's any positive benefit on social-emotional stuff with these types of courses?
I think just having the kids work in groups and being with other students they normally might not hang out with and working at and problem solving it. Where Mrs. Caesar's classroom is, it's by the library in the middle school. So a lot of times I'm walking by, and I love to pick out the little group and see how they're interacting, just listening to them problem solve, like, what about this? Well, have you tried it that way? I think that's tremendous.
And they're very engaging lessons, too. So I think in terms of just bringing some, bringing some joy into their learning, like I think that pays benefits, too. When you have something that's engaging and authentic and, you know.
They can't wait to get to class.
Right. And that's kind of the secret to school. Make them want to be here. It makes it a lot.
And they're moving, and they're talking, and they're doing, and.
Yep.
It's really cool materials they have.
No skills transfer way outside of that class, you know.
Should warn my Project Lead the Way socks sign. They liked me so much, they gave me two pairs. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I have Josh Day up for one second. We have graduation on Friday, and I know Josh wants to give a brief update and highlights on senior week activities, what's going on, plans of graduates.
All right. So tomorrow, so we already, we had our class night last night in Erodecade in the class picture. It went, I thought it went really well. So I haven't actually been able to go out and see the route, because what, when, once the kids leave, that's when I have to get the, because we don't want 150 cars to run over the cables for the sound system. So that's why I have to get that stuff going. But I understand the route was pretty packed. So, and, you know, I'd love to see us be able to continue this in some way. Douglas PD has kind of said it's really tough to do this. And so we, I've talked to Officer Paloney about maybe doing something where we just kind of go through the middle and high, the middle school parking lots, the other campus, basically, and route around that way. So we're not maybe obstructing traffic quite so much, but we're still giving a chance for the community to see the kids and do something cool.
I think it's going to continue. I think we can go and talk to the police chief. I think this is, as a community as a whole, I think it's one of those COVID things that came out of it. There was a positive. I know with the construction, it's a nightmare. So I totally get it. Maybe we have to change our route a little bit and go down 16 versus going through the center of town.
That actually might be a great option, too. That's true with the construction, too. Yeah, maybe it's like sort of a perfect storm. But we'll have to kind of see what we can do with that. We did our senior picture. It looked lovely. The, and we had our class night, and it was $53,600 worth of scholarships, I think, which was fantastic. And, you know, I love doing the awards, because you, you know, you'll have a couple of kids who win a lot of awards and stuff, but that's cool. But there were some kids who were very surprised and I think very excited about the awards that they got. So I talked to a few of the kids afterwards, and they had no clue that they were, that they were getting some of the awards that they got. And I think that that's always a great thing. So we, they'll wear all of their, you know, in the military, we like our medals and ribbons and stuff. And so, same thing here. They'll have them all on display for Friday. Tomorrow, they do have a rehearsal from 10 to 12. And it seems like we do a lot of rehearsal with them, and it really is necessary because you just want, you know, you just want them to look good. So I know the kids are like, we have six hours worth of rehearsals. This is ridiculous. Like, they need it. They really do. Because they're, they're also a little bit checked out at this point, so they're not necessarily, their minds are not as spongy as they had been when they had classes. So we'll do our rehearsal tomorrow. They then have the graduate parade. And the order, we're going to do the middle school, we'll be there at 12:30. Then we'll hit the elementary school. It'll basically up the hill. We'll hit the elementary school, and then the primary school last. So the graduates will be out for that. And that's, I enjoy that. And the kids, you know, it's funny, like when they start with this, they're like, oh, we do all this walking. Why are we doing this? And then I think when they get into the schools, they, like they'll go into the elementary school, and there'll be at least one kid who says, it still smells the same. They do get a little nostalgic. So it's nice. And then they'll come back and they'll do their picnic. And we were originally going to do this today, though I had to make the call yesterday at 2 o'clock for the caterer for the picnic. And at that time, it looked like it was going to be pretty lousy, kind of early. The rain held off until about 3, but, so we might have been able to fit it in, but we'll do it tomorrow. Like, we know that it's going to be nice. So they'll come back, they'll do their senior picnic, and that's always a good time. And then Friday is the main event. We do have a rehearsal in the schedule if needed, but we shouldn't need it. The graduates will be here around 4:15. So if anybody's listening, moms and dads, and they've told you some other time, it is 4:15. We like to get them here a little bit early. The, we have students park over at the middle school, and there is some parking up here at the high school, but if you're not here by 5 o'clock, you're probably going to have to park in the middle school, and then we'll shuttle you over. If you have somebody who has kind of mobility issues, the soccer field is not easy to get to, but we get golf carts from Blissful Meadows, and they're really gracious to let us do that. And we have some, we have a crew that will shuttle people up and down to the field. And then we will kick off at 5:30. So the grads, they start off in the school. They do come down that long and winding road, as Mr. Mainz used to say, and we'll get things going. I'm going to sing. It's going to be absolutely wonderful this year. And the Hortons will be there, the staff band. And I think it'll be a pretty good event. It's looking better
Yes, it is.
for tomorrow. I sent out an email yesterday saying, just let's manage expectations that you might have to tell Uncle Murray it's going to be Saturday instead. And I know that that's really lousy, because the kids go to PINS. They get home from PINS. They come back at 5, I think. So, yeah, then they have to be here at 4, get a good nap in, and, you know, Mountain Dew on the way, and it'll be okay. But hopefully, we'll just go on Fridays, and then, on Friday, and then they can go to, go to PINS and enjoy that afterwards. So, and that is senior week.
Thank you so much. I know it's a lot of work for you and your staff to do. And like I said, I just totally appreciate everything you've done to make sure the seniors get what they need this year at post-COVID. Knock, knock on wood. I mean, it's awesome.
Yeah, there's always one detail that I miss in the setup. So last night, like I did the setup for class night, and I was quite pleased with myself with how it looked. And then this morning, I came in and Mrs. Peck asked me, where did you put the flowers when you were done? I forgot to put the flowers out. So there's always something. So maybe Friday, I'll forget to bring the diplomas down or something.
Little things.
Yeah, little things. Mr. Vega will forget his ukulele.
So you'd want a school, a school committee member there at 4:15? Would that work?
You guys can be there after 5, yeah. It's just where, it just depends on if you want it. Try to get parking.
Parking, yeah.
We do, we reserve seats where if you let me, especially if you let me know, we'll have a seat laid out for you. But there's But there's, we have a pretty significant section of seating for, for staff or school committee for other town officials that come, so. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you.
Josh Romano. Next on the agenda is CARE-SOLIS. I know it sounds like code, but I'll fill you in on what it is. About a month ago, Lindsay Ryan, the school adjustment counselor from the high school, sent me an email that she'd been at a workshop and heard about this CARE-SOLIS program. It's a third-party vendor that assists schools, parents, families in finding counselors and therapists. We all know how difficult it is to reach out and find counselors and therapists. The website, the platform is available 24/7/365. So it's available seven days a week, 24 hours a day, all year long. We ended up, I ended up doing a demo with Lindsay, did another one with Josh, and worked with Quoting. We used some grant money to purchase it for the remainder of this year and for all next year. The platform is available to all Douglas Public School students, their immediate families. It's available to all employees and their immediate families. So it encompasses a pretty large, pretty large grouping of people. What you do, there are two different ways that you can access the platform. It has mental health component and it also has a substance abuse component. So what you do is you, you can either sit down with the school adjustment counselor and that school adjustment counselor will walk you, the child, or you, the parent, through a series of questions. You'll enter in your insurance information, you'll enter in what you're looking for, for criteria. And within 48 hours, the CARE-SOLIS company will hook you up and do a, what they're calling a warm handoff or introduction between the family and two counselors. And what's really good about it is that they give you the match. They make sure that it's covered by your insurance and it's actually people that have relatively immediate availability. So we asked, what does relatively immediate availability mean? And they said, within two to three weeks, which is pretty quick turnaround. So you can either do that with the school or you also have the ability to go on a website, check off what you're looking for, answer a series of questions, and then they'll send you an email. And you then just have to respond to that email and then they'll do the warm handoff within 48 hours. So when Lindsay explained it to me, I'm like, I don't believe it, because it sounds too good to be true. She reached out to about a half dozen schools who've used the program this year and they said it is accurate, that within 48 hours, they do pair you up with a person. Now, we all know from either personal experience or from loved ones that it's tough to get that match. So you might go to the two people, it may not be a match, you have to try again. The other difficult part is, we can set it up for you. The counselors will reach out to you a couple of times, but then the parents and the student also have to make that connection to. But at least it's a good resource for the school to be able to provide that. It's also going to free up a lot of time for our school psychologists and our adjustment counselors. Instead of them having to go out and find the resources, make the phone calls, follow up, CARE-SOLIS does this. So this will allow our school adjustment counselors and our school psychologists to do a little bit more one-to-one work. So we're going to have it up and running by the end of the year. I sent something out to principals, we should, they're going to do a launch meeting the end of next week. The week of the 13th, I'll send something out to parents and families and staff that it's available. It'll be available throughout the summer for people and then we'll use it for next school year. If it works the way we're hoping it works, then we'll just renew the license for the 23-24 school year. So I want to thank Lindsay for bringing that. She just went to a workshop, said, hey, this looks cool. I think I'll email the superintendent and see what he says. And I'm glad we were able to do that.
That's amazing.
Questions on that?
Are we going to have a link on our website?
We'll have, so, yeah, so part of it is, they'll, the, I attended a meeting today. They'll give you a link on your website, they'll give you social media feeds. They'll actually give you a QR code that you can put on that takes you right to the website. They'll give you the web, there's a ton of resources. I wanted to get it out today and they said, let's wait till we train the principals and the school adjustment counselors in case anyone has a question. Someone should be able to answer it. But the information they provide is so detailed and they have a lot of stuff that we can push out to families. And there's a link for the website as well. Yep, awesome.
They also do substance abuse help, too. We didn't really talk about that much in that line in that...
No.
But they have a whole system for substance abuse assistance, too. And they, it looks like they do use pretty good data so that, you know, we can track.
Is there a limit to how many times a family could use it or a student could use it?
Nope.
I just think, thank you for bringing this, because we all know the kids are all struggling, social, emotional, and then substance abuse, that's always going to be there in some way, say before. But I am just elated that money well spent, I think, just for everybody all around. And so, thank you.
Thank you to Lindsay for that. And then, and that leads into some threat assessment protocols. So Josh sent, again, Lindsay Ryan and Jess Hurley to a DESI workshop about two weeks ago. And they talked about schools putting together threat assessment teams and protocols. So they met with me afterwards and basically what it is, is each team, each building needs to have a threat assessment team. That team's made up of core people of principal, assistant principal, adjustment counselor, school psychologist, maybe the nurse. And then depending on the situation, you bring in some other people for the team. We're really looking at two types of threats. We're looking at self-harm threats and we're looking at threats to others. So those are the two threats. So after they came and they talked about it, they're like, we don't know where to go about and get resources. There's a lot of resources out there. We need to figure out how to streamline it. I sent an email out to some colleagues and one of my, someone in my network said, hey, we did this work this year. I'll give you everything that we have. I said, thank you. I'll take it. So what, what we have now is the ability to look at the two threats and have the team determine whether or not it's a transient threat or a substantive threat. And if it's a substantive threat, there's a rubric that's been created that determines whether or not it's a low threat, a medium threat, or a high threat. And then from there, it gives you guidance as to how to respond to each of the three different situations. And again, its research base has been adapted from Fairfax County School System. It's been taken from the risk, the suicide risk assessment survey. It's done from a lot of different resources. I want to highlight this uses a guide. It's not the end-all-be-all. It's not an exhaustive list. But what it does is, when schools find out that a student is made a threat to harm others, it puts a team together quickly in place. It gives you a set of questions that you, you can ask the student. It gives you some information that you need to compile yourself. And then allows you to determine whether or not it's a low, medium, or high risk. And then from there, it gives you the ability to say, okay, let's go through the checklist as to what they're recommending we do. And depending on what the risk is, it gives you a list of things to go from. And then from there, you can take your next steps. But it at least allows us as a school system to talk to kids, work with kids, have a mechanism of gathering in data. And as we know in education, we have these scenarios coming at us all the time. So to be able to have a concrete rubric that you can pull out and just go through and at least use it as a guide to begin to assess a situation is a great thing. So I'm thankful for Lindsay, for Josh was sending Lindsay and Jess to the DESI workshop, for them wanting to meet with me and then for a colleague to be able to put that all together for us, to save us that time from having to do everything. So we met today with the principals and the first two days of PD, we're going to do some work around this so we can launch it and have it in place for next school year.
Awesome.
I just think that's a great, it's a great example of being proactive. You know, it's, the district's more than one, more than just one person. And I love that, you know, we're seeing stuff brought into the district from other places. Yeah, the collaboration is really, really, really great and important.
And that's it for my report for tonight.
Awesome. All right. Now on to school committee and subcommittees' accounts payables.
Signed this warrant. Did you go and sign this one?
I don't, not all of them.
Oh, it doesn't, at the beginning, it's who signed it, the report can be still provided.
I don't know what to say at this point. Let's see what we signed for the amount.
Okay. Sorry. I signed warrant 4-1 SCH-2-2 on 4/7/22 for a total of $340,845.28. Warrant 4-2 SCH-2-2 slash 4-3 SCH-2-2. Warrant C8-41422 and 4/21/22 for a total of $122,039.49. Then there was warrant 4-6 SCH-2-2 on 5/12 for a total of $435,449.8. And then warrant 4-7 SCH-2-2 on 5/9/22 for a warrant total of $65,732.50. And last warrant 4-7 SCH-2-2 on 5/26/22 for a total of $33,140.74.
You didn't notice anything out of the ordinary with any of these expenses?
No. But I looked.
We betrayed well.
I asked questions.
That's awesome. That's what you're supposed to do.
All right, now moving on to the consent agenda. The dates for the school committee summer retreat. I know Dr. Vera's got the Doodle app where we all went through and picked in our availability of dates, so...
So, yeah, so what I was looking at, we did three weeks. We did the week of July 18th, the week of July 25th, and the week of August 1st. Beth and Teresa replied that they could do anytime on the week of July 18th, anytime of the week of July 25th. And Heather said that she had availability the week of August 1st, specifically August 3rd and August 5th, those two dates. I know Monique has a commitment that she's trying to navigate a little bit, so...
Yeah, I have a, I'm running, I'm helping to run or organize and fund a summer camp in, that's happening in two locations for four weeks. Yes, so this is like an endeavor. And, you know, funding is still coming in, so exactly what it's going to look like is still being worked out. But I think it's actually going to be the two locations from what it's looking like. So it runs from like 9 to 4. And I just don't know when exactly I can slip away at this point. I'm hoping, I'm, I'm hoping, I'm thinking maybe on a Monday I can do it. I don't know. I have to, I have to look. But I didn't know, like, is a Saturday a possibility? I know that you...
It's fine. I can come up on a Saturday.
Oh, that's true. You're coming from far away.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know. I wish I had more answers for you. This is like, sort of...
When will you know about, what date will you know about the, your schedule? Will you know about the meeting on the 15th?
Probably, yeah. So basically, like, is it any time that works, that I can find is going to work for everybody? Is that, it sounds like, I don't hear, oh, except for you, you said the last week, right, works for you?
Well, in July, I don't have, it's just, if we go past the week of the 5th of August, if we go into that following week, I'm fine. It's the following week, the week of the 14th. So, I mean, Mondays don't work for me for my work schedule. I just know normally Wednesdays and Fridays are better because my work schedule, it's not that bad generally those two days. But I'm flexible enough to know that if we have to, to work around your schedule to accommodate it.
I mean, I wouldn't work around my schedule. I mean, I will...
It's a collective thing, so...
Yeah, I know. But if three out of four people can be there, you know, like, what's Julie's availability?
Julie did, I'll talk to her offline, because I know that...
Is it possible to zoom in? Is that something that can...
I think until this... Until the state tells us whether or not they're going to authorize, they would like to continue with Zoom meetings, but until the state says...
Oh, this is going to be a public?
This will be, because, because we'll have more than a, we'll have a quorum. It has to be an official school committee meeting. So we'll have to post it. It's open to the public. If anyone wants to come for three, four hours and listen to us do goal setting, they're welcome to do it. But the way I've seen this run, and I think Heather's envisioning it, is we're probably going to have to do a half hour of school committee business and then we'll launch into goal setting, which is probably going to take us a couple of hours to work through. So zooming in as we're doing different activities, goal setting, could be a little tricky to participate.
I mean, I don't know what to tell you.
Will you know more on the 15th?
I hopefully will. I mean...
So your camp runs till when, Monique?
It's the 11th to the 5th of August. So we... There are, I think the Thursdays, I'm actually running a program. The other days, I'm just making sure everybody gets to where they need to be. So those, that's why I'm thinking I can probably find some time to, I'll talk to the staff and say, is there a day that I cannot be?
What about the week of August 8? Does that interfere with any of your plans, Dr. Vera?
Let me double-check.
We can do that.
Does that interfere with anybody for the week of August 8?
The week of August 8th works for me. It's that next week, that Tuesday to Friday, I'm away.
Yeah, I'm away, too. So, see what you got. But if we have to, we can always go back to the week of August 8 and pick a date there, if need be. Because I, I think we need to have enough people there, because the goal setting is huge. That's, that's based on the superintendent's evaluation, so we need to have everybody. And I know you have your thoughts, I have my thoughts about where we're going for goals for this year. So I think it's a collaborative effort where everybody needs to be there. I know, and so I'm trying to accommodate, make sure that we put something on the calendar that you're actually going to be able to participate.
So we can look at either August 3rd or 5th. And if that doesn't work, we'll look at that following week of August, August 8th, the week of August 8th. And hopefully by next meeting, you'll have an idea of...
Okay, so we're saying 3rd or 5th of August or the following week? Is that what you just said?
Correct. Or before.
Figure out your schedule. If you can find a date into the first two weeks of July, the, I mean, the last two weeks of July. Once you know your schedule, because you'll know better than us. I don't want you to be stove-piped in because that's your last week of camp.
Well, I'll be there on Tuesday and I'll figure it out on Tuesday.
Okay.
So, give it you great flexibility. Give you great flexibility. Don't, don't fight yourself in. So if you can't make it that first week, we'll figure it out.
Don't worry. I mean, it is what it is. I can't change the summer camp dates.
No, no, no.
I wish I could, but... It's a one-time thing, so... It sounds like we'll find a date.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do the best we can. Make it work, so...
We have two more weeks to look for it.
Yes. There's that. So we're going to pass on the dates for the summer camp retreat when we revisit the next school committee meeting. The 2022 and 2023 calendar update.
So what we, what we missed the last time was New Year's Day falls on a Sunday. So when a holiday falls on a Sunday, you observe it on a Monday. And we missed that Monday holiday. So we have to add the Monday holiday to it, which also then bumps out the school year an additional day. So we have the changes in the calendar, which are adding January 2nd as a holiday and moving the last day of school now to either the 15th or the 22nd of June.
I didn't realize that either.
So we just need a motion?
Yep, we need to, I need to have a motion for someone to approve the school calendar.
So I move to approve the Douglas Public Schools 22, 23 school calendar as discussed.
Motion made by Teresa. Motion made by Teresa, seconded by, seconded by Monique. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? All good. Next one is the school committee meeting schedule. If you could look over and see if you have any conflicts due to scheduling. I know that we have one on August seventeenth that is a conflict. So does anyone else have anything? Is anyone opposed to moving the seventeenth to the following week, right, Dr. Vera? To August twenty-fourth?
August twenty-fourth works for me.
That's right. Good point. Are there any other dates on here that anyone sees? So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the school committee meetings with the adjustment for August twenty-fourth.
I move to approve the school committee meeting calendar for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three with the adjustment to August twenty-fourth.
Motion made by Teresa, seconded by...
I second it.
Seconded by Beth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained?
Thank you.
Next item is the Douglas High School out-of-state prom venue on August sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
So the class of twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-four.
Twenty-twenty-four, yeah.
So the tradition at Douglas High School is that the junior class, the class of twenty-twenty-four next year, hosts the prom. And the kids go through the process of finding a venue, and it's a very exciting learning experience for them, like planning a wedding almost. And this class went to ten different places, which I'm sure was very...
Wow.
Very arduous experience for Ms. Malo and her co-advisor, Ms. Floria. Of those places, what they're looking for, they, they set a target for a capacity of two hundred, is that what we'd said?
Yeah.
Based on the size of the class and then chaperones and everything else. So they look for a place with a capacity of two hundred. Six of those ten places couldn't meet that capacity. Two others were outdoor venues, Blissful Meadows, where we've done proms in the past. They're not, they don't want to do an outdoor prom. I was a little bit grateful for that, actually. One site had a parking garage that is not generally a good idea for prom. It's, it's, it's a site for pre-gaming. I don't, I was trying to find a more subtle way to say it, but it's, it's, there's a lot of control issues with that. And I'm not particularly a control freak, but that's one that I don't like. Another one, Union Station Worcester is gorgeous. It's, also has a parking garage, and it's actually open to the public. So like, the public would have to pass basically kind of through the prom to get to other aspects of the venue. So I'm a little leery about that. So that left two places. Is it pronounced Kirk Bray?
Kirk Bray, yeah.
Kirk Bray, yes, yeah.
Which is in Rhode Island and...
Beautiful town.
And the Grand View.
Yeah.
The Grand View came in at about four thousand dollars more than Kirkview, and almost a twenty-five percent jump in cost from Kirkview, which amounts to about twenty dollars per student per ticket. And if we were to do Grand View, we, they would be looking at about a hundred dollars per ticket. And this has not, these have been lean years for fundraising for classes because of COVID restrictions. There are a lot less things that they could do, and so these classes are a little bit more, they're, they're a little bit poorer than previous classes might have been before them. So what they're looking for, they're hoping to do Kirk Bray. Did I say it right?
Yeah, that's Kirk Bray. Yeah, Kirk Bray.
It's Kirk Bray, yeah.
So they're looking to do the Kirk Bray, but that venue is in Rhode Island, so they would need your permission to bring the kiddos across state lines.
I think Grand View knows that they kind of have a hold on the area as far as capacity goes, so they don't offer buffets anymore and raise their, like, meal, set meal price to sixty dollars a person, and you have to pay a two-hundred-dollar minimum, like a two-hundred-person minimum, sorry. So even if we're under, we have to pay for two-hundred people. So I think they know that they kind of have, like, a capacity grasp in the valley, so...
Kirk Bray's nice.
I like Grand View, but I've never been to Kirk Bray.
It's nice.
Yeah, the kids loved it.
It's in Lincoln. It's beautiful. It's around the golf course, and you see it, and if it's a beautiful weather, it's beautiful.
I know Dr. Vera likes Pleasant Valley because they have his initials on the front lawn.
They did.
But there is something of a, you know, there's, there's always an effort by the kids to not go where...
Yeah, they don't want to repeat.
Right.
Yeah.
That's totally understandable. I mean, it's not that far.
But I don't know. I eat the same thing for lunch every day, so...
As do I.
But I get, I do get the sentiment, yeah. Not everybody's weird like me, so. So I guess what we'd be looking for is permission to use, to basically an out-of-state venue for our event, the same as we do with athletic events to sites of Rhode Island.
I move to approve holding the twenty-twenty-three prom at Kirk Bray Country Club in Lincoln, Rhode Island. The anticipated date for the prom is April sixth, twenty-twenty-three.
I second. Motion made by Monique, seconded by Beth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All those abstained? Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for going to ten different sites.
Oh, thanks. I took a, like, poor day over April break with the kids. I didn't actually go see this one. I had softball, so they all went and then they came back and said, this is where we want it. Spooky.
Olivia DeLuco is very excited about it.
You're excited.
They are. All right. Moving on to the FY twenty-twenty-three non-union rates and salaries and administrative salaries review.
So every year we come before you for, approve for a cost of living increase for all non-union employees. So we have three sheets here that I'd like to walk through with you. The first one is for our recommendation for administrators in district-wide positions. This is for members of the leadership team. We had originally, in the FY twenty-three budget, budgeted for one and a half percent. We're recommending and proposing a two percent increase for members of the leadership team. As you can see down the bottom, the difference between what we had budgeted and what we're proposing amounts to a sixty-three-hundred-dollar increase, which I'll talk about at the very end. On the next page is two positions. It's the administrative assistant to the superintendent, which has now changed to the executive assistant to the superintendent, and it's the assistant to the business and operations manager. We, again, originally had about a two percent increase for those two positions. We're recommending or requesting a three percent increase, which is a difference of fifteen-hundred dollars for those two positions. And then on the last page is the increases for the administrative assistant full year, the secretarial clerk school year positions, the network technicians, and the technology data specialist. What we're proposing is a one and a half, those positions have always had three steps. So what we're proposing this year is a one and a half percent increase from step one to two and two to three, and we're proposing adding a fourth step, and the difference between step three and step four would be a three percent, a three percent COLA. We had originally budgeted a two percent, two-point-five percent COLA, but we're requesting a three percent COLA and that addition of that fourth step, which comes to a difference of twenty-one hundred dollars. If you take those three differences and add them together from what we're budgeted to what we're proposing, it comes to ten thousand, eighty-eight dollars. Courtney and I have had some conversations in that, and looking at our budget, we can handle that within our FY twenty-three budget. So this would be the end of all of our contracts and all of our employees. As you know, we, we finished the four contracts with the custodians, the cafeteria workers, paraprofessionals, ABA's, and Douglas Teachers Association. So this would be the rest of the staff for the Douglas Public Schools.
So can you give just some thought about, so why, why the change?
Why the change? Sure. So when, when we looked at, like, Courtney and I have had like four hundred different conversations on this, so...
Four hundred different things.
Four hundred different things. So starting at, at, at the first one, we, when we looked at the bulk of the contracts going from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three, it hovered around that two percent increase for, for most of our bargaining units. So when we were looking at one and a half percent for members of the leadership team, we said, let's see if we can make that consistent with what's going on across the district. When we looked at our administrative assistants and we looked at those positions, if you look at where their salaries are, we have, we have a lot of our secretaries, a lot of our tech people who've been here for ten, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen years, and they've been stuck on that third step for ten, fifteen, twenty years, really going with a one, one and a half percent COLA, sometimes a two percent COLA for years. We wanted to recognize the fact that we've, we did a lot with our paraprofessionals, we did a lot with our secretaries, with our ABA's, with our teachers association, in moving those salaries to be a little bit more competitive with the region. We're trying to do the same thing with our support staff, with our, with our tech people, with our secretaries, our administrative assistants, and we proposed adding that fourth step, which is a three percent COLA for it. As I said when I met with, when I met with them, if you look at our salaries across the valley, we're in that lower twenty percent. It's where we are. We're never gonna be number one or two. The goal is to try to get us as close to the middle as possible, and we can't do that in one year, we can't do that in two years. We need to do that incrementally over, over several years. So that's part of the process of trying to, to get people to that middle, that middle range of the valley. And it's important if we're looking to obtain and retain and, and, and keep people here.
How, have we looked at the demographic of Douglas and how, like, is the middle feasible for Douglas and the incomes that are here, you know, like...
Is the middle feasible today? Probably not. Is the feasible, is the middle feasible as we progress with what we're hoping for in growth in town and growth in industry? Yes. Feasible.
Yes.
And the other problem is, if you don't mind my saying too, is that I think, I think we all know, we've had a, I hate to say, a lot of people coming and going.
Mm-hmm.
And we want to obtain and retain quality staff, and a lot of training goes into, you know, when somebody starts new, you put a lot of training, a lot of effort in to that new employee, and then they're leaving, and then a new one comes in, if you're lucky enough to get one. What we have noticed, honestly, is it was, it was bad before, but now it's, I hate to say, it's extremely difficult to get people. With my position, I have offered it to two, Jean and I interviewed, for the assistant to the business manager, accounts payable position. We interviewed two fantastic people with, one works in Sutton, so right the next town over, and then another one as well that worked in local, local, so, and we're not even talking about somebody from out, and they wanted, at least they were, they were making four thousand plus more than what I could offer, and so I'm still struggling to find somebody. So what we end up doing is having to keep doing this, lowering the bar, but as far as moving the district forward, you know, we talk about moving the district forward, you know, it all comes down to staff. It all comes down to staff. You know, we really want the quality staff, and I, I, you know, personally don't feel we're talking about big dollars here, but I do understand what you're saying though, Monique. We certainly aren't expecting to jump, absolutely not, you know, in a big, large way, you know?
Somebody who gets on the school committee, you know, I've got kids who are in the district, and, you know, what I want for my kids, I'd want for other people's kids too. And so I feel like it's, and I know that it's kind of because of things out of our control, but I just feel like we've spent a lot of time talking about salaries and money of staff, and like, I'm hoping that this means next we get to talk about the kids' outcomes, you know? Like, that's what's most important to me, and that's why I'm here. You know, and I know that there's a lot of other factors that we have to consider to be able to talk about student outcomes, and I try to remember that, but, you know, this is just, this is a difficult thing for me to look at here now because we're at the end of the school year, and I'm like, okay, so what's, what are the kids doing? What do we do, you know, what's, what's happening on their level? Like, that's, because that's why I'm here, you know, ultimately. And I don't know, that's just kind of where my head is going.
No, and I, you know, one of the reasons why, you know, we brought Project Lead the Way here to have that conversation is for people to hear that we're also looking at it from, from that lens too, and trying to bring in these new programs, these new programs for kids. The difficulty here with this is we left everyone else for the end because we had to, we for the, we wanted to get as close to the end of the year as we could to make sure we could pay our bills and see what we had to carry over. I know, you know, two positions that are still in the back of my mind going forward is that school adjustment counselor for the, the middle school and that, and that custodial position for, for the district, for, for different reasons, but that adjustment counselor's so important, you know, being in the middle school, seeing what happens there every day. They need supports. They, they need that additional support in there. I'm excited to, you know, that we can have that care sauce, which might free Kayla up, who's the adjustment counselor, a little bit of time that she's not making phone calls, trying to find people, but we need, we need additional resources there to support the social, emotional needs of, of our kids. So hopefully, when the, when we're looking at the end of the year money and what we can, what we have for next year, maybe that's a conversation we can have in, in July, but...
I also, I support raising these. We don't want to be a train and drain, you know, district where people come, get the experience and say, yep, and now I'm going for more money.
I'm totally, and I totally agree with that. I just want, I would also like there to be more on the other side of the, you know, the conversation too, you know?
I could say this, and I'm sure there are a lot of people who, I am so happy that we don't have to be looking at contracts for the next three years after we negotiated four in, in a very, very, very short timeframe. So that's a site, now we can focus in on some, some other things. Well, you know, Courtney and I were talking about budget planning for next year, and it was music to my ears when she said, Paul, she said, I can't repeat it, but I want to repeat it. Said, we need to, she said, I think we need to start the budget cycle earlier next year. I'm like, yes! So...
I went into his office with a bunch of crazy ideas.
It's all right. I recorded it. It's fine. We have it on, we have it on record.
We have it on record.
So, but we need to start that budget process early this year, so we can, we can start having those conversations, but bringing in additional resources for, for our students. What made this year's process so difficult is we didn't have an FY twenty-two contract, so we didn't know what we were paying out, and we didn't know what we were budgeting for FY twenty-three. Mediation ended, I think, was February twenty-eighth. We came to an agreement, but we had, we had...
Tell me.
We had three significant obstacles that we still had to go through, with the last one being town meeting and getting that additional appropriation approved. So we couldn't finalize everything until early May, which is, which is late.
Which is a few weeks ago.
Which is a few weeks ago.
Yeah.
I understand what Monique is saying, absolutely, but I also think being on, trying to recruit people for some of these positions, it's really hard with the salaries that we have because people, you know, the special ed coordinator position, people can work, you know, a forty-week for the same salary as this. And I just think, like, our teachers need consistency with their supervisors and with their administrators, and I feel like that goes down to our kids. Because I'm the same as you, Monique. I'm like, okay, but what about my kids? Like, what about our kids? Because, but I think if we don't have this foundation, because, like, I agree, Teresa too, like, we don't want to be a, you know, you just come here to get your experience and then you go. Like, we want to promote those people that have stayed and have been a part, I mean, there's teachers now that taught me, that are teaching my kids. Like, we want to promote those people to be here. And I feel like it's pretty consistent with, if it's consistently what we're doing with the teacher salaries of COLAs, I, I do think it's, I think it's appropriate. But yes, I do think at the end of the day, like, but what about the kids? But I think they need their foundation and they need their stability, and we want people to work hard for us, we need to treat them that way. That's my spiel, sorry.
So the only thing I have is, between the steps, how long do they have to wait?
One year.
One year?
How, how long between each step? So it's year one, step one, year, step two is second year, step three is third year. So again, if you look at a lot of our administrative assistants, they've been here for ten, fifteen years, and they've been on that, they've been on that step three forever.
And you said this whole, this whole thing is cost, is, like, what's the difference?
Ten thousand, eighty-eight dollars.
Ten thousand?
For all...
For all of these people.
All of these people?
On all of these pages.
So superintendent, business manager, principals, all of their increases?
The difference from what we budgeted to what we're proposing is $10,000.
And also the three on the next page, and then we have
Four on the last page.
Is it, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 others. So you're talking about 25 people?
About 25 people.
Yeah.
So we're able to take, give 25 people for $10,000.
Any additional?
Because remember, we had some budgeted already. We're only talking about a very small incremental amount, remember?
Yeah.
The difference, yeah.
If there's no longer discussion, any more discussion, I'd be looking for a motion.
So I move to approve the FY 23 recommended salary schedule as outlined in the papers presented to us.
Is that good enough, Courtney?
Is that good enough? Do I have to say a different?
Yeah, if you want to just say, for administration and district-wide positions, central and business office assistants and the administrative assistants in technology.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Teresa, seconded by Beth. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Anyone decline? Okay. There's that one. Next is the school business and operations managers report.
Unlike most, actually all the other years, remember I used to regularly bring these, but. So, so I'm bringing you, believe it or not, I can't even believe I'm saying this, FY 2022 general fund transfers number two. These are transfers requested by administrators. Haven't gotten to the ones as far as going through the entire budget yet, but these are the ones requested by administrators. Didn't know if anyone had any questions? And just for the two, two new members, I'm sorry, Beth and Teresa. So we vote the general fund budget as it is, you know, we know it's bottom line appropriation from town meeting, but we do bring forth to the school committee and do approve a line item budget. So anytime we need to move funds from one line to another, we bring them to the school committee, for school committee transfers.
So basically like, if my, if I needed money in my checking account, I would go to my savings account and get it. It's the exact same thing. You're just switching from one to the other.
Because you always have to charge the expenditure in the proper TESI account. You can't just put it where the money is.
Does anyone have any questions?
I'm just curious, what collaboratives are we sending students to?
Um, boy, because you're trying to remember like all the different.
Maybe.
I know it's SWEC, but I'm trying to think if there's any others.
We're not a member of any collaborative?
Not a member, but we, yeah.
But we send, I think, two.
Bond Street and Worcester. Do we?
Oh, no, no.
We haven't put anybody there?
SWEC is the only one that comes to my mind as far as collaboratives go.
Except.
A lot of, most of them are private. For special ed, most of them are private. There's private, there's out-of-state, there's collaborative, and then there's other public. Massachusetts called schools and other public. For instance, another public school like Oxford or Grafton that have programs that we can send them to. Those are the four categories.
Can you make a motion on this piece, right?
Yes, please.
So I'd be looking to have a motion made on the two classifications.
On transfers?
Transfer, sorry.
That's okay.
I would certainly so move if someone gave me the proper wording for it.
I make a motion to approve the FY 22 general fund transfer number two as listed in our handout. And FY 22 reclassification number three as in our handout.
So moved.
Motion made by Teresa, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Beth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Anyone abstained? Thank you.
And just by way of explanation for Teresa and Beth, the reclassifications are just moving from one account to another. It went in one account, it needs to go into another. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any topics Dr. Vera has not anticipated?
Not at this time.
And so we are going to do an executive session this evening to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies to respect their due. We will not be coming back into session afterwards. We will adjourn from the executive session. So I would need to make a, have a motion made for us to go into executive session to do this, and then we, we do a roll call vote.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices.
At 8:15 PM, roll call vote, please.
Beth Markshamay.
Teresa Rossai.
Monique Salva, aye. Heather Moore, an aye. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.